Good morning. Yes. Welcome. Welcome. Some of you in the back, you're welcome to sit up here. There are plenty of spaces. Am I talking too loud up there? Does it sound all right? Good? Well, thank you for being here this morning. This is starting to be a habit, us meeting like this where I come and tell you about what's going on at the campus. And I really enjoy this, so I really appreciate you all coming. So we'll get started, and it's going to be much like all of our other town halls. I'm going to start by kind of updating you on what's happened since the last town hall. I know you're all sitting on your edge of seat, wondering what's been going on around here since the last town hall. Then I'm going to do a few other things. I'm going to talk about a few changes. Those are getting fewer and farther between, which is really nice to kind of settle down and get all of our people hired. But I will tell you what's happened and the few we have left. We're going to talk a little bit about the campaign, good things happening there. We're going to talk a little bit about what's going on in Olympia, which is the subject I know the least about right now because I don't have a clue on what's going on down there today. But I'll tell you what's been going on over the past several weeks and how we've contributed and dialogued with them. I'm going to talk about our financial picture, the UW as a whole, and then how that has an effect on our campus. We've talked about this all year, but I think it's important. We'll continue to talk about this wherever Colleen is. She'll be happy because she wanted me to talk about this today. We're going to talk a little bit about the campus growth agenda. That's been a subject since I interviewed here, and it continues to be an exciting concern for all of us. We're going to talk about the strategic plan, where we are right now, where we're going, those kinds of things. And then I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what I'm going to prioritize on this year because I've asked all you to be thinking about that. So we'll talk about that at the end, and then we'll have time for questions. So did I leave anything out that you want me to have up here? We can add stuff. No? Sure? Good. Okay. What's happened since last February 23rd? Well, remember, we were getting ready to go to New Zealand, several of us. We went to New Zealand. We had a wonderful time, and we signed an MOU with the only Maori university in the world, and I'm going to say it one time, I've been practicing it, the Ware Wananga Awanu Arangi. That's the name of the university, so you've got to start practicing that. And they're going to be back here this summer to start talking about all the different things that we're going to work on together. It was a fantastic experience. I went. Sharon Parker went. Her husband went because we're actually transferring the relationship that he had with Evergreen to UW Tacoma. Our Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs, Melissa Lavitt, went, and our Dean of SIAS went. So we had everybody there that would be involved in this partnership. And now the next step is to get all the faculty involved, and I see that the faculty are excited about it. So that's exciting. So that's happened. Eight of our students, for the second time, we had eight students inducted into Husky 100. This is really exciting. Yes. I am not going to read all their names at the moment because we're going to do that later this afternoon. We're going to recognize those students again. They've been recognized at a very formal, not formal, but a very lots-of-hoop-la ceremony up in Seattle. Ed arranged for many of us to go there. There were about 10 or 15 people up there representing UW Tacoma campus. It was a great day. I'm really proud of those students, and you're going to meet them this afternoon. This is really cool. Our past ASUWT president was awarded a Fulbright to go back to Cambodia and help. Yes. And she's been asked to tell the Board of Regents next Thursday a little bit about this experience, so we'll get a little bit more visibility. We're really happy for Sophie and what she's going to do for the rest of her life. She's a wonderful young woman. Have you guys been reading about Professor Sugar? Man, he's kind of a hero right now. He's kind of like our Lieutenant Governor. He's a hero around the world. He's exposed climate change. But his article on the river piracy, that one river that was going one way one day and the next day it was in a different drainage area, has gone viral all across the country. And it's really neat to see UW Tacoma in print. Well, it's really neat to see Dan Sugar in print, but it's really neat to see that he works at UW Tacoma. So if you haven't read about that, go read about it and see if you can figure it out. I haven't quite figured out the geometry of how that worked, but it's really exciting. Also, along those lines, we've been hearing a lot about the Story Corps and the Op-Ed Project. These things are starting to come to light, and I'm going to be in trouble because I can't announce everything here, but there's a lot of good stuff happening on this campus every day. If you keep up with our website, every day something more exciting is going on. Also, remember back in February, I was talking about Kelsey almost getting to the scoring championship? Well, you all know that. This is old news now. She broke, she like crashed the record for scoring champion. She did a single-season scoring champion, a lifetime career. And if we'd gone farther in the Pac-12 tournament, she may have broken Pistol Pete Maravich's title. She was only about 100 points behind him. She broke the all-time record for the most free throws in the season. And who knows what draft pick she was? Number one. Number-one draft pick. Yeah, and Chantel was 21 right behind her. So that was all exciting. That's our team, you know. That's not Seattle's team. That's our team. So that was all exciting. Hundreds more things, but I don't have time to do all of them today because I've got to update you on other stuff. Okay, leadership development. We have all four of our deans in place now. Melissa has done an awesome job. She's only been here 16 months, and we have four new deans. I see a couple, and I see one right there, all in place now for the start of this next year. So that's very exciting. Now, we've got to do the same in the Vice Chancellor and Assistant Chancellor categories. We do have Minta Heinz Wilson, who's actually here right now. I don't know where she is today. She's looking for houses maybe today. She was on campus yesterday. She'll be on campus later today, maybe. So it's exciting. She's coming August 1st. Our Committee for the Vice Chancellor for Finance is hard at work. You've seen their aggressive timeline. They already started putting things on our calendars, and the finalists don't even exist yet. But the meetings are on our calendars. I see them coming all the time. So it's a very aggressive timeline. We hope to get that done, and I want all of you to participate in those interviews in early June and possibly the end of May. Depends on whether we end up with three finalists or four finalists. Okay? So read your email. Get those things on your outlook. Executive Director of Global Affairs. I don't know exactly where they were when I talked to Melissa late last week. They were selecting finalists. They may have finalists now, but that's moving forward and should be finishing soon. Right? Soon. Assistant Chancellor for Equity Inclusion, that's a little more longer term. We decided to do that in two steps. The first step is to poll the campus, talk to all the constituency groups about what they are looking for, what they need in the next Assistant Chancellor for Equity Inclusion. That will take about six weeks, and then we'll launch the search for finding that person. So we're hopeful to have that person in place by January of next year. In the meantime, we have our own Professor Deirdre Ranor serving in the interim, so we're in good hands until that time. Next, campaign update. You all know what the goal is, right? 45 million. How many of you know where we are right now? Anybody want to guess? Advancement staff, don't count. Anybody else? Forty, ooh, that'd be nice. One more guess? Somebody said halfway. We're between halfway and 40. Yeah, we're almost 60% of the way. We're at 25, 793. This is exciting. Yes, let's hear it for them. And we have some new dashboards that kind of clarify where we are. So this is kind of exciting to look at, too. You can kind of see the categories. The top is what we've secured, and I believe the bottom is what we have left. And you can see the various categories, student support, excellence funds, program support. And are these always available on the website? Is this real time? Josh, is this real time on the website? Can people look at this? Yes. Okay. So, kudos to our campaign crew and all of you that have been helping. And many of you in the room, I know, have contributed as a staff or faculty member here. So thank you for doing that. Olympia update. Again, this is where I know the least, but let me tell you what's been going on. Michael Wark has been very deliberate and very insistent that I go to Olympia often. And we've been down there. We park the same place. We eat somewhere different when we go, but we park the same place. And we go and get into people's business down there. It's kind of the best way to describe that. We talk to our Pierce County primarily, our Pierce County contingent, but we do go up and talk to some other leaders in higher education, so on and so forth. Compensation is a big one, and it's kind of unclear to me exactly where we are there, but I believe they'll fund about half. When it all said and done, they'll fund about half. The provost has backed off of the 4% that we were talking about earlier in the year, and we're talking about 2% or 3% now. We've put into our budget, though, 4%, so if it does become 2% or 3%, that will give us a little leeway to do unit adjustments or to work on the new faculty salary. And we're working on that with the Faculty Assembly right now. So that is still kind of unknown. As far as tuition goes, you know, our governor wants to keep the tuition constant. I believe in the House, they have asked to keep it flat, and then they've put some backfill in there. On the Senate side, they actually allow for a slight tuition increase of 2.1%. So we don't know where that will land. I believe that over time, if we don't inch the tuition up a little bit, it will be difficult later when all of a sudden we have to increase it by a big amount. So we watch this very closely to see what happens. As far as new funding for campus growth, the University of Washington had two major initiative requests in. One was statewide with all of our partner schools, and it was called Student Success. Had a lot of individual things in there, and UW Tacoma had some individual things in there. And then we had a second request on high-impact degree programs. It was a significant request, about $14.3 million. Both of those went in, and what came out is not exactly either of those, but in the Senate side, there is $10.5 million of new funding that would be distributed to the UW campuses. 70% of that would have to be STEM. So we would get some proportion of that 10.5 on this campus, which would be great. We would put it into what it was intended for, cybersecurity and those kinds of things. On the Senate side, they have $6 million in there, but it is earmarked specifically for computer science at the Seattle campus. So that's what's in there right now. Something in between or something different will happen, but that's what's there. As far as pre-law, we have our Legal Pathways Program that was actually put into legislation that we would add this program to our campus. And then there was an amendment put in to add the funding for that. So that's sitting in the Senate side. It's not in the House side, but we believe there's a lot of support for that, and I'm thinking it's going to happen. Likewise, we have our building plan design in the Senate side, right? Does it say the Senate side? Yeah, I think it's in the Senate budget. It's not in the House budget, but we've talked to our House Representatives, and we believe they're behind it. So I look for, and I think we should be planning on getting that $500,000 and begin to program and design our next academic building. I'm taking the positive route on that. I think we're not 100%, but I believe we're going to get our soil remediation. It's in both the, both sides of the budget, and it's in the governor's budget as well. That's very important to us because we know every time we do some project on this campus, we have to remediate the soil, and it's very expensive. It's really hazardous material. And then we've all been working very hard to get the state to realize that it needs to increase the state need grant. This money would go directly to our students, but then the students would bring it here and, or somewhere in the state, and pay tuition with it. So we've been supporting that. The governor was on our campus talking that up early. We participated in an editorial board conversation last week. You may have read it in the paper over the weekend. We're all supporting the need grant. It's not only good for UW Tacoma, it's good for UW. It's good for higher ed in the state. It's good for our population. It's good for our country. Might as well say it's good for our world, I guess. There you go. So anyway, we're hopeful something happens there. Okay, now we get to the not-as-exciting-as-stuff. And that's kind of the financial picture that's developing for our whole university. First of all, at the University of Washington, this is all three campuses, really. Over time, revenue has decreased. Now, that comes from a lot of sources. On this campus, it's primarily revenue from the state or from tuition, and we know that's gone down. On the flagship campus, that's also from medical payments. The people attend the hospitals, the dental clinics and all that. That revenue has gone down over time. And unfortunately, the last three or four years of that 10-year period, it's gone down even more drastically. At the same time, expenses have increased over that same 10-year period. And unfortunately, the last three or four years, they've increased at a higher rate. So you can kind of see those two things don't line up well and cause our overall financial problem to be kind of constrained. Not kind of, constrained. So we all have to pay attention. That's going to be a theme here for a couple of slides. So tuition, we all know, has been flat for a while. It's very likely to stay flat. And another thing that has happened, and all you have to do is drive by Seattle, and you can see all the cranes. There's a, what's it called? The Region of Doom. No, Boom. The Region of Boom, because so many things, that was a Freudian slip. I do think that way sometimes when I have to drive up there. But just like the city, the university has done that, too. They've built a lot of different new buildings that were very important because construction was, costs were low, debt costs were low. But now we, you know what happens when you get mortgage, you have to pay the payment. So the debt service payment has actually increased threefold, you know, for the University of Washington. So we have to pause and take a look around. And what that means to us is ours hasn't increased threefold. We do have some debt for the original campus construction that we maintain over time. And since I've been here, we have increased our debt because we bought Court 17. We paid 21 or 22 million for Court 17. We put 4 or 5 million down, maybe 4.5 million down. So we have that debt sitting on there. So it does cause us to think more strategically about what we take on moving forward. So that is kind of the overall picture, and what does that mean for us? Well, I've shown this slide two or three times, but I'm going to show it again, maybe one more time after this, too. So just be prepared. But this slide shows our campuses' finances in a very simple way. Right now, this is the income that we expect to get this year, $65.4 million. And this is how much we expect to spend this year in the major categories, faculty compensation, staff compensation, operations. Good news is, that number is bigger than this number. We don't send that money back. That money comes into our temporary funds, and that is where we would get the down payment for a project that we want to do on this campus, which is the Tioga, the old Tioga. We want to remodel that. Or we use it for scholarships. We use it for good purposes. Likewise, the first year, the biennium, the biennium we're looking at right now, the budget we're working on, we're estimating, based on a lot of givens, they're unknowns right now, that our income would be 68.2 and that our expenditures this next coming year would be 66.7. Nice, huh? We should have some leftover, a little flexibility. But the problem is the next year. So the second year of the biennium, if nothing changes, if tuition doesn't increase, if we don't get new money for new programs, what will happen is we will bring in about $70.8 million, and our expenses will be 70.4. So they're getting, you know, dangerously close. That doesn't give us a whole lot of flexibility. So the difference in that number is about $377. So right now, our new things that we take on, if they're greater than $377,000, then in two years, if nothing happens, they meet. So see kind of the dilemma we are in right now? So we will spend some new things because we've got to do a few new things around here, but we won't go past this number until we hear more from the state and about the budget. Or if we take more into our own hands and generate more income through various sources that we have on campus. So that's kind of the picture of a campus. I don't want, we're going to get some happy stuff now. I don't want to stop on this. But the financial picture is constrained. It's not doom and gloom, but it is constrained. Okay? So if you have questions, we'll take them in a few minutes. Okay, what does that mean to me as your chancellor? First of all, I'm so glad that we worked on a strategic plan when I got here because now we have that document that we've all agreed to that guides us and helps us prioritize. So I'm really glad that we have that. That's going to be invaluable as we move forward. Our growth agenda has to be very, very carefully monitored. You know, when I came and interviewed, everybody was worried about too many students. I don't feel that we have too many students. I feel like every student is valuable, and we should have millions. Not millions, but we should have thousands of students because once they come here and graduate, they're changed. You know, they've been transformed. I think they're going to be great citizens. They're going to go out into the world. But we can't grow faster than we can handle the student population in a sane way. Nobody wants to come to work and be crazy. So that becomes very important because we know we can't add a lot of new positions. So therefore, here's kind of the bottom line. The new faculty and staff hires do need to be limited. Okay? But that being said, I want to say I've been trying to calculate a little bit. The number of faculty or the percentage of faculty that we've increased over the past five years is around 37%. So our total numbers have gone up about 30%, 37%, but our student population at the same time hasn't quite reached 30%. So we're setting pretty good. We have added faculty support. I haven't calculated the staff numbers yet, but we need to get in there and calculate the staff numbers as well. So I feel like we're setting in a good spot right now. So it's never a good time to pause, but when we do have to pause a little bit, it's nice to have people here that can do this work. So that's a reality. And because of that, we have to ensure that our units honor the established composition strategies that our campus has. We can't hire additional part-timers or things like that. We need to stick to what we're doing and stay on course. And I'll talk more about that in a few minutes. Also, program growth. New programs. You know, when you bring creative people to a place like this and ask them to work hard and to delve into their fields and be state-of-the-art and best-in-class in their fields, they're going to want to do new things. And our students are going to want to do new things. We're going to want to have new degrees that keep up with the future. So the bad news is, we can't just do that anymore out of tuition. To do those new things, we have to have identified sources ahead of time, meaning we have to do requests to the state budget. We have to have philanthropy that, you know, endowments that can fund these kinds of things. Or we have to, like I said, take it into our own hands and generate the income ourselves. Also, external grants, things like that. So as chancellor, I commit to you to be more proactive in helping us generate new resources and keep on task. And then the last thing is Tioga refurbishment has been temporarily delayed. I think everybody probably knows that on campus now. That made us all disappointed, but it's not no forever, but it's no for right now. We need to pause. So Tioga will stay like it is for some amount of time, and then we'll take that back forward, maybe next fall. So there's where we are on this campus. So what are we going to fund? Well, we have a budget process that we've put in place, made up of a campus budget committee that has about 30 people on it. It tries to have every constituency base on campus there at the table. Deans, directors, vice chancellors are there, and they advise us. So we had five meetings this year. We talked about Budget 101. We talked about many different things. And then we did a process to prioritize what those people were thinking are the top priorities for this year. Several things came out. So we had everybody stick the note and vote on these. And kind of the number-one vote-getters, if we're going to spend any money, we need to do it on student success, both infrastructure and money for our students in terms of scholarships and those kinds of things. So that was first, by a factor of like two. Then professional development was right behind that. We need to provide professional development. If we're going to teach this growing diverse class of students, we all need to stay up with their field. So that was the second thing that came out. And then the third thing was work to continue to increase the diversity of our faculty and staff here. So those were the highest vote-getters. So as we, on the Executive Budget Committee, listened to that, we tried to consider those options as we decided on new things. So the way it works is the Executive Budget Committee then recommends what the new things are. They talked about the priorities, and then I have to actually decide and tell Jan this is what we'll approve. So this is what we're thinking right now. I've committed to two tenure-track computer science faculty lines. We've sent students away in those areas, and we had an A-Bet visit. That's a accreditation board for engineering and technology this year. And they told us, clear and simple, if you're going to have this program, excuse me, you're going to have to support it. So we've approved two new tenure-track faculty positions in the institute. And they have to be tenure-track because we want to continue to make that ratio in our institute whole. Assistant Chancellor for Equity Inclusion, Sharon was 80%, but if we're going to do this hard work, our impact goal on equity, we need to increase that to 100%. So we're going to put funds into that position and make that position 100%. So those are the two things we've guaranteed. And if you go calculate how much computer science faculty cost, then you're going to quickly see we're going to use up our $377,000 in no time. So that's kind of the only commitment I will make today. But as we hear from the state and everything becomes more clear, I do have a couple other things I hope to do. And one of those is help alleviate some of the backlog in our counseling center. You know, there's been a lot of things going on in this world that cause us, us and our students, to need to talk to somebody, to go to the counseling services. So Student Affairs and Academic Affairs have gotten together and talked about a way to maybe manage this with some more students. So that's like first on my priority if we get some new funds. Another thing that I feel responsible for is everybody, it seemed like everybody wanted to re-discuss the schedule matrix, except maybe one or two of us didn't want to discuss that. But most people want to discuss the schedule matrix. And there was universal agreement, let's change it so we can get that noon hour back in there. So we did. So fall 2018 or autumn 2018, we're changing that, but it moves the day about 20 minutes or 30 minutes later. So that means Patrick in IT and Susan in Security, they have to have more coverage. So I don't think it's fair to do that without giving them at least a half a person in 2018. So I'm committing to that now. Hopefully, we have the money in 2018. Okay, and temporary funds, these aren't permanent commitments, but commitments we'll make out of the leftover money that we've been building up each year because the income was higher than the expenses, professional development pool. Because remember, that was number two on our priorities. So we're going to add additional money for all of you to do more professional development. We actually have a position on campus that was tweaked and has been changed into a professional development and training manager. It was more of an HR position before, and that position will have some budget with it to help pay for some high-level training that we can bring to campus. But we'll also have some funds set up, and we're in the process of getting those set up now. So some of that will be central, and some of it will give directly to the constituent groups and let you manage those yourselves. So we're in the process of doing that now. Our staff association, I've been so proud of the work of our staff association. They've organized themselves, and now they need a budget. So I'm committed to giving them a budget at least for three years until we kind of get through this tight spot, and then maybe we'll make that more permanent. But I'm going to commit to three years. We have to replenish our scholarship pool. We are growing our private donation scholarship pool, but that's primarily in endowments, and it takes a while for those to reach their capacity, their giving capacity, how much they will generate. So in the meantime, we are replenishing the scholarship pool to the tune of $315,000 a year for the next two years. So $630,000 of our bank account is moving over for scholarships. And then our commencement ceremony, second one, is not free. That's going to cost us, I think, about $30,000. The Tacoma Ho-Chile Initiative, we're extending that another year. It's paid great dividends for our community, for us as well, so we're extending that. And then several small campus space projects we're committed to already, and we're going to, at our next EBC meeting, we're going to look at a few more. So that's kind of what we're at right now. So let me talk about growth. 2014, we had 4501. Then the first year I was chancellor, I had no responsibility for this. I just walked in, and you grew, or we grew, by 2.6%. We had 4618 in autumn 2015. But then last year, man, we almost hit 5,000. In fact, we were over 5,000 for about a week. And we got to 5,300, but the official number is 4987. 8% growth last year. That is really exciting, but you have to prepare yourselves for that. What the plan is for this fall is somewhere, this is a science and a art, but somewhere between 4 and 5, which is somewhere between 200 and 250 students, is where we hope to land. Okay? And I've got approval. At first, we thought maybe- At first, we thought maybe we were going to be asked to pause our growth completely, but I got approval for us to grow this much. Carl has supplied this information just the past couple days, so we don't know how many students are going to come. But this is kind of the picture we have right now. So if you look at the first-time students, eighteen ninety-six applications received, that's up four-point-nine percent from last year. So that's pretty cool. Look at the quality of these students. So it's not like we've opened the gate wider. They're just coming. They're prepared. The Tacoma Whole Child Initiative, Pathway to Promise, is us working together with our community to help the college-oriented culture in this community has worked. It's paid off. So in the transfer application, I just got this, I think, yesterday, so I didn't have time to digest it completely, but I did see our transfer applications are up eleven-point-six percent for our two-year colleges only. All those students that come from Pierce and Green River and Tacoma Community College and so on and so forth are up eight-point-three percent. So this is like last week's data, and this is yesterday's data, or day before yesterday. Here's one more cool thing. If you look at the ethnicity and race of the domestic students in the first time in college, which is where we're really going to grow over time, our transfer student population is going to be more consistent over time, we're getting more diverse than we are right now, which is kind of cool. Our African-American population is thirteen percent, Latino twenty percent, Asian-American twenty-one, Native American, we need to work harder here and try to increase that. Pacific Islander, three percent. So we're making great strides. Okay, charting our course progress. This is our strategic plan. I'm maintaining our commitment. We put this money in the budget a long time ago. It's there. It's not taking away from new faculty or anything. It was already there. We're going to stick to that, and we're going to fund some new projects. We're waiting on the SPCC. I'll talk about that in a minute. So we have three-hundred thousand in permanent funds and two-hundred-and-fifty thousand in temporary funds. We are losing our two chairs of our strategic plan coordinating committee. One is retiring. She always says, "I'm already retired," but she's going to retire again. And the other one is going back to a full-time position. I kind of stole her. So we are going to have to bring in or bring somebody from our campus in to lead that group and help me and the whole campus with strategic plan. That may cause me to use a little bit of that if I have to buy out a course or however we get that done. But that's taken place. HR is helping me write the position description. The ideas, the call for ideas yielded all kinds of excitement on campus. I was really excited about how mu-- but of course, this also caused our SPCC a lot of work. That was a lot of proposals to generate, but they meticulously went through all that. Twenty-seven formal proposals are now in their hands, and they're evaluating those to see which ones we're going to be able to fund going forward. The lightning talks have started. Hopefully, some of you came to those. There have been two sets of lightning talks. I was out of town for the first one, but I heard great things about it. I did have a chance to see the second one. They were around impact goal three, which is community, and impact goal four, which is equity. And they were fast, direct, but very exciting. A lot of good work already going on on our campus. Overall, those are the key success indicators. We're still working on that. We're in the kind of the final stages, hopefully, of deciding what those are going to be. And then as soon as we decide what they'll be, we'll have to set the baselines so then we can see how we're marching forward and making progress. So that's all happening as we speak. I believe they met on Monday, and I haven't talked to them since Monday to find out what happened on Monday. We did hold a mini-retreat. Of all the deans and directors and the vice chancellors and the strategic plan coordinating committee, back on April tenth, it was great to have everybody in the same room. I heard a lot of synergy where people are working on the strategic plan, kind of underneath the bar and above the bar. So that was exciting to me, and it also gave us a lot of input on how to direct the strategic plan process moving forward. And then what I'm committing to this time, not this time, but next October, a year into the plan, we will do a formal overview of where we got during that first year and where we're going. Okay, now I want to just briefly talk about what I've heard on campus, and then we'll get to questions as I've listened and talked to people about the strategic plan this year. First of all, in our first impact goal, which is right there. The UW Tacoma Experience Empowers Students to Achieve Their Dreams. Oh, it's up here, too. I see it over there. Duh. Yeah. So what's been going on there? All kinds of things. Melissa, the executive vice chancellor for academic affairs, has put together a learning and retention council that is doing all kinds of good work for our students. The pathways to promise partnerships are being added. As we speak, I believe we have almost twice as many now as we had a year ago. And each one of those is a formal partnership between a high school and our institution that's a direct pathway for those students. They can see their future. They do what they're supposed to, and we will follow through and do what we're supposed to. We serve, because of that, we serve a higher percentage of Husky Promise students than any other campus. Now, that's, sounds good, it is good, but that means we have to take responsibility for generating those scholarships because a lot of it's on our plate. If we're bringing in more students that have need, then we're going to need to take that on and be responsible for generating those scholarships. And good work has been going on. We're already at six-point-eight million, you saw from the previous slide. So people are generous in Tacoma, and they're given towards that. I already mentioned the eight Husky one-hundred members, two years in a row. We had eight, and Bothell had seven. Don't tell Wolf I said that. Student leadership transition, Kathleen and Carl and then several of us are working hard to make sure that we have a smooth transition in student leadership from one year to the next. We all transition over time, too, but our student leadership transitions every year, so we need to work hard on that. Berkan, I saw him in the room earlier. He's also very interested in making sure we have a great handoff. EAB Guide, this is something I don't know a whole lot about, but there's excitement about it inside Academic Affairs, SAES and IT. It's an app that will nudge students. I think we've experimented with things like this before, but it's really sophisticated, and I believe the nudges are customized for the type of particular student that's being nudged. So that's pretty cool, and we'll see how that works as a pilot project that's going on right now. So there are many things going on in the first goal. Second goal, scholarship, many things going on here. Our campus communications team, did I forget to move the slide? Yes. We champion public engaged scholars. So our communications team has been writing stories featuring different faculty, and I've seen stories from David Rees, Christine Stevens, James Gao, Sharon Lang, many, many more. There's been stories highlighted on our front page. The vice chancellor has put together a faculty development council that's Iran. Our associate vice chancellor for research is heading up. Faculty are engaging in dialogue. I got the emails, they're talking about this and how it affects their promotion. And another thing I've worked towards is getting our faculty more involved in the national conferences that have to do with engagement or publicly-gauged scholarship. There are a couple. The Engage Scholarship Conference, we've been, the first two years I was here, we took a team to Penn State in two thousand sixteen, fifteen, and took a team to University of Nebraska last year. And Linda has put in a proposal, Linda Isham, for us to take a team to Birmingham, at the University of Alabama Birmingham this fall. Also, we've participated in the USU, the Urban Serving Institutions Meeting. Last year was easy because it was in Portland. This year, it's in Atlanta. It's going to be a little harder, but I'm going. I've actually volunteered to serve on the board, and I'm being considered to serve on the board of USU. Excited about that. And Melissa has participated in online events with the USU. So we're getting involved nationally in an urban-serving way. Okay, the next one, and I'm using up too much time, I'll go a little quicker. Our community partnerships are transformational. Whole Child Initiative, I already talked about that. It's getting national visibility. Senior leaders of our campus just over the past couple months have met with the YMCA, the Children's Museum, the Muse, the Tacoma Housing Authority, MultiCare, CHI-Franiscan. We're really working to deepen those partnerships we already have. We're going to work on new partnerships, and I told you about the one with the New Zealand institution, but we're really going to strengthen the ones we already have. We hosted two comprehensive meetings. Leslie Kincaid did a lot of the background work with Boeing. We're really trying to work on solidifying the Boeing partnership. You know, they've had a hundred-year collaboration with the UW, and we feel that they can collaborate equally with us because a lot of their plants are right down here in our backyard, in Frederickson and Auburn. So two great meetings we've had, and there's been good outcomes of those. I talked about signing the MOU tomorrow. I'm leaving to go to Hong Kong and to China for, at the request of the Tacoma Public School System with our partnership. I'm going to give a talk on our partnership to a group of Chinese educational institutions that work on sending students to American high schools to facilitate their transition into American colleges. So I'm excited about that. And Cindy Schmar Schmidt is going with me and going to work on some study abroad possibilities while we're there. And I think I told you last time, we hosted our first-ever event at AT&amp;I, the Association of Tribes of Northwest Indians in Chehalis, and that was attended by like a hundred people. Our next impact goal on equity, all kinds of things here. We got a snapshot of that during the lightning talk. The biased instance reporting tool is up and running. Strength Quest tool is being utilized on this campus. The "we are first-generation" students, you see that everywhere, on our website, on posters. Lots of things going on in this particular impact goal. Likewise, our faculty and staff are working hard on improving our hiring practices to try to make progress on having our campus staff and faculty look more like our campus student body. This is really difficult work, though, and we'll never quit this work. We'll never get done with this work, put it that way. Culture. Our campus is respectful, productive, and inclusive. Well, I already mentioned one thing. Our staff association, having the new organization, and we're going to fund that this year. We've drastically increased all kinds of training on campus, safe zone, equity, inclusion, cultural awareness, all kinds of things. Ross Brain, who's the Native American coordinator, the liaison at Seattle, is helping me bring sovereignty training this summer to campus. Many of you will be invited for that. And we've had, made many tremendous strides recalibrating our faculty ratios. Just over the past five years, we've increased our overall faculty, I already told you, by thirty-seven percent, but at the same time, we only increased our part-time faculty by twenty-one percent. So that's really good news. That provides more secure positions for our faculty with benefits and more stability. Likewise, during the same time period, we've increased the competitively hired, those are promotion-eligible lecturers, from ten to sixty-seven in just five years, while at the same time, reduced the non-competitive or the non-promotable lecturers from thirty-four to seventeen. So we're not done there. We'll continue to work on that, and that will be a priority for us moving forward. With growth. I've talked a lot about growth already. We purchased Court Seventeen. That's a big step for us. It's put us in the residence life business. TPS is coming online. There's a big sign of growth right there, new laboratories in several of our disciplines. We're working with our community partners on the Legal Pathways Initiative. We're working with Federal Way on a presence over there. UW Tacoma presence off-campus for the first time. Of course, the five-hundred thousand dollars in the state budget would be awesome. So we are making great progress in all of these six impact goals. So what am I going to do? I want you to be thinking, there's going to be a question here in a minute. What am I going to do, though, over this next year to make all of this work? Well, one of the things is I need to finish up the work we already started. So I'm going to stick with my work, and we're going to monitor. It's, I think we've done most of the work that we can in the past, but we're going to stick with that and try to figure out what good things can happen as a result of the state budget. That's going to remain kind of on the front for the next month. But another thing I want to continue to work on is our relationship with our local tribe. We're on the Pualip tribal land. I think for us to have a platform to work with tribes across the state, we need to have a wonderful relationship with our local tribe. So I have another meeting with Bill Steroud in early June. We've been making great progress, and you're going to see some fruits of this labor pretty soon. Also, we need to continue to work with all of our partners. I already told you about that. We have various people in the leadership team doing that now. I'm going to continue to stick with that campus budget process and make sure that it's being transparent and all you can participate. And I need to take even a bigger role in our campus campaign moving forward so we can finish well. And I'm going to continue to champion charting our course. It's very important. We have really good people working on that. But one of the things I thought I could do, and this is the last thing I want to talk about, as you know, last summer, when all the things were happening across the country, we had that moment of time out on the staircase. How many of you were out there on the staircase that day? Yeah. And we were struggling. Our students were struggling, our staff was struggling. What can we do? This world around us seemed like it was falling apart. What could we do? And I committed to this series of active discussions. Well, we had those all year. Last night, we finished up with the bookend. It was a great event at the Pantages Theater. So we are kind of done with that year process, and what I asked you to do was listen. We are bringing some of these people who have started social movements, who have made progress. I asked you to look at best practices and decide what you're going to do. I'll decide what I'm going to do. We'll decide together what the campus is going to do. So I ask you to do that. And I think, for me, the best thing that we can do is stay on course. I think we're doing a great thing here at UW Tacoma with our students. I'm really pretty excited about what we do here, and I said this before, I think we should take the long view. We should be deliberate about what we know how to do well. We teach our students and give them the tools to be successful. So things have gotten maybe a little bit worse in many people's eyes since last summer because we did have an election and inauguration, and we've had travel bans, all kinds of things. So we can't let down our guard. So I think as a campus, what we should do is further commit to charting our course. Because if you read charting our course, and we produce students that are made in that mold, are shaped in that mold, they can go out and help us change the world. So that's the first thing. And last night, how many were at the lecture last night? Many of you were? I really liked what Jamel Bowie said. He was asked the question, "What can a young person do or what can an individual do about these national problems?" And he said, after he thought about it, "Act locally. Act locally. Join or start your action where you are." So that told me just last night, boy, we already have this plan. We have this institution. Let's work really hard right here. Let's act locally. And remember what we did in our mission when we were going through the strategic plan? We changed, we added two little words, "our time and place." So now that I look back, that was really smart of us. We said, "We're going to work on all this for this time and this place." So I've talked to you several times. What I'm going to do is I am going to commit to this. I think us as a higher institution, we need to work at leveling the playing field. We need to provide access to these students and give them that opportunity. We're here, and this time is now. We need to all do that together. I'm going to ask you to do one thing. You do that, too. And then we'll make progress. We will empower students to achieve their dreams. We will transform our campus into a great place to work. We will help all of our staff, faculty, no matter what kind they are, have a better place to work. This will be a great place to work. Our partnerships will become more transformational and will be more grounded in social justice, and we will continue to innovate and grow our campus. So I'm committing to that. I will push behind Core Theme Five. Now, Core Theme Five has two able-bodied people leading it. The co-champions are Allison and Ricky Thompson. But this year, I'm going to kind of get behind that goal and work on that goal to help our campus culture. So right now, I have in my office sixty comment cards, or commitment cards, that you all signed during the launch. So I just expect all of you to make good on those comment cards and continue to work on the strategic plan, and that's what we're going to do together. So I used up a lot of time. Let's take some questions now. If you can, can you come to the mic?
So the first question is about the strategic plan. And so there are the funds that you've identified for the, to funding the initiative and then the lightning talks. I'm just wondering what your plans are for the future in terms of giving other opportunities to allow people to participate in both of those? Just because actually, for me personally, the call for those happened at a time when I just couldn't get it, get stuff in for that. And so I'm just wondering whether there will be future opportunities? Because it does seem with the strategic plan, this is kind of an iterative process thing people will learn as they go along. And I'm just wondering what your plans are for that.
Well, my plan, Justin, is exactly-- Well, my plan, Justin, is exactly what you just said. I want to bring the strategic plan into our culture. So my plan is that we continue that process. We want it to transform our campus, our budget processes, the way we work. So my plan would be to continue that. Yes, there'd be more opportunities. We have to figure out how that works, though, and that's why it's taken a little longer this year, is to get those processes in place. But SPCC is here for the duration, they'll put things in place, and there will be new opportunities for that.
Okay, great. And the second question was about the pre-law program
Yes.
And the development of that. And I'm just wondering, you know, what those funds would be for in terms of development, just to expand on that topic a little bit.
Well, the reason they came up with the $400,000 is a budget went with that. Some of our faculty and Melissa and a couple of other people put a budget, we had a committee that worked on that, we put a budget together for what that would look like. And it would be a person, probably a cross between a faculty member and a professional that could be the champion of those pre-law programs, so that we could hit the ground running when the admissions and the job market turned around for law. So the issue was, the timing wasn't right for right now, but if we do nothing and we wait four years or five years or however many till it turns around, we would have all that momentum to get over. So if we make an investment now in a champion to keep that moving forward. So that would primarily be a person, but then some funds to have clinics, to help study for the LSAT, those kinds of things. There is a budget for that that I'd be happy to share with you. And the $400,000 is two years, 200 each year. Next question.
Yeah, I'm Curtis Black, I'm a graduate advisor in the institute. And your enrollment statistics left out a large group of students, which was the graduate students on campus.
Well, that was the whole student. That was the whole student population.
Well, you had first-time in college stats, you had transfer student stats, but there was, there was nothing with graduate student stats.
Help me out, Carl. Did our graduate stats, in the numbers at the top, they were.
Okay.
Do we know where, we don't know where a graduate student?
So our applications for graduate students are up 12%
Okay.
From last year.
Oh, so you're going to tell me good.
And they're up, and they're up 20% over the last two years. And our graduate student enrollment has typically been several hundred students above our freshman enrollment every single year. And the graduate students, as you know, pay more in tuition. So how do the graduate students fit in for our revenue shortfalls?
Well, that's an excellent point, and that is one place where we can control the tuition. So, and actually, by coincidence, the Millgard School is lowering their tuition for graduate students for competition reasons. So I think that's a good place that we can grow. Growing new graduate programs at the moment might be a little difficult if you don't have the funds, but growing your graduate enrollment for programs you already have is an excellent idea, as long as we have the resources to teach them. I'm sorry for leaving that out, thank you. And I have to admit, the enrollments I did this morning, I was working on the transfer enrollments, getting it all ready, because that changes every day right now. Well, thanks for pointing that out. Next question. Does anybody else in the room know about the graduate enrollments in their organization? It was all for, oh, I thought you were just talking about the institute. Okay. Going once? Yes. Could you go up to the? Melissa or Mike, do you have any update? There was a meeting last Friday, were either of you at the meeting last Friday? Here, Mike Work was there.
The question's about the status of the Federal Way program. Federal Way has been active in requesting that we have some sort of presence there, and we've been responsive to that. And we're partnering with Highline Community College, and Melissa's met with her counterpart at Highline. We're also partnering with the school district, the superintendent is involved. The process is involved trying to get together meetings with the city. And so we had a meeting on Friday, and everyone agrees that Highline will provide the core sort of of the programming, because it's primarily students coming out of the high schools, as well as adult returning students who tend to have remedial as well as lower-division demands, and then looking at areas that make sense in that area, such as healthcare. There's a lot of healthcare going on there, where we might be able to provide some support for those students. And we're still kind of examining that. And the question is, where will it be? That's the big question. So figuring, Melissa and her counterpart have figured out a starting point where we might actually do some academic work, and that's the first step you have to have before you figure out what the space looks like. And so that's the stage we're moving into now, looking at meeting in June to start talking about what the city might do, what our options are for space where we can start maybe seeing some students in fall of 2018 in Federal Way, in some sort of joint space in the city of Federal Way.
So what I believe that means is nobody knows exactly what the endpoint is. It's a project in process. We're trying to build it to see what grabs hold. Anything else? Well, thank you for your attention. Please come this afternoon, we're going to have the spring celebration, I believe in this same room. I don't think it will look like this anymore, knowing Brianna, but please come. Thank you.